Good, okay. Okay, regarding agenda item number six, I'll entertain a motion that we allow Ms. Huron to enter into negotiation regarding this piece of property this gentleman wants to purchase from the county. Okay, so let's, I'll accept the motion that we go into regular session now. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. We're now, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against? We're in regular session. Would this be the proper time, Ms. Huron, to do this?
If we want to put on an agenda to take action, that's fine.
Okay. Alright, then are we through with agenda item number six then?
Yes.
Agenda item number seven, Ms. Brenda Trevino, discuss and take action on approving the Wilson County Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds Application for Funding.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. Each of you received a copy of the drafted Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund Funding Application for Wilson County. We currently don't have an application process. Back when the county started collecting the funds, there was no process in place of how those funds were going to be distributed. So the former county judge and I sat down, and I've shared this with you over the last four years. But just as a reminder, the county judge at the time and I sat down and we deemed the organizations that bring heads to beds in the county for those events that promote tourism according to the tax code in chapter 351. I've been getting myself more educated regarding the proper use of the funds. This year I did do a post-event request form from each of the entities that we distributed funds to last year. Just to ensure, I did a full audit on there, requested lots of information to determine that the funds were being used according to the law. While in the course of that, and all of this is coming from the Texas State Lodging Association, they are the ones that work directly with the state comptroller's office. And so they provided templates, they provided the template for the post-event request form that I used, as well as a template for an application. And so I'm recommending to the court that we consider the approval of the application process. What this will allow is rather than coming to court every year with an automatic selection of organizations that the judge and I deem, you know, worthy of your consideration, this will allow it, allow any entity that meets the definitions provided to us by the comptroller according to chapter 351 to be eligible to apply. And then at that time, you know, we'll develop a review system of the application and then bring the application to you, the court, for your determination on approval of funds or funding to that specific entity. We do have money budgeted this year. As that fund continues to grow, we will continue to budget because it's designed that we can't sit on that money. So if you have any questions regarding the application I provided you, please let me know, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number seven.
You're absolutely right, Commissioner, and this should not come to a surprise to any entity because most counties and cities that collect the tax do have an application process. So I collaborated with some other counties and even the city of Florisville to determine what is their process. And everybody takes the template provided by the State Lodging Association and then modifies it according to their county. And so I feel like this would be a good opportunity for us to make sure that we are remaining compliant and that should we ever get audited by the state, that we have all of our ducks in a row as well.
Motion made by Commissioner Martins, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussion regarding agenda item number seven? Here and now, I call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes.
Thank you, Judge. And just for the public's information, we will post this application on our website so that anyone who, it has all of the instructions there on how to submit the application, so.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, we have Mr. Tom Dubnik, Karnes County Auditor, discussion only, Karnes, Wilson County Juvenile Probation Department, fiscal year 24, annual independent audit by Armstrong, Vaughn, and Associates.
Good morning, Court. Thank you for having us. I brought Melissa Padron, Juvenile Chief, with us, Karnes and Wilson share the juvenile probation department and so forth. So I'm going to let Melissa kind of give us an overview of what we do, then I go on the findings of the audit.
Okay. Good morning, Court. Thank you for having us. Just a little overview of our probation department. Of course, we've got the actual probation department and we receive referrals from local judges or from police departments and we handle those referrals that are sent to us. We also have an HHSC grant that has been awarded for five years, and that's a prevention grant. We provide prevention services in school districts and at community events. You'll often see our group providing services, are setting up vendor tables at events around the different counties that we service. We do service cities in the entire district, so they, that staff is driving far and all over the place and all hours of the day and night to get the services provided. We also have a truancy prevention program, that's a grant that's been funded by the governor's office. And we have, that employs two attendance specialists, they work with the local school districts and receive referrals. And they work closely with the parents and the student and they teach them the compulsory attendance laws, they teach them the school policies, and just ensure that that child has a little extra support getting to school and providing the documentation to the school that they need. We also have our JJAEP, that's our Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program. That's the program that FISD has graciously allowed us to be in their building with. And that is pretty much the last stop for any kids to receive their education as far as the juvenile justice system. So before the child is removed from the home and placed in an alternate setting, we do try this service. And the service is a very therapeutic program, we have a counselor in-house. We also have a teacher that provides services to the students and we have an admin assistant there. We've been very lucky that we've had the support of the juvenile board who oversees our department and the school districts, you know, are very, very cooperative as well. So that's what we have going on right now as a probation department.
And the juvenile board she was mentioning consists of the two district judges and the two county judges. So we met on Friday, went over the audit findings. So the TJJD, every two years they require us to have an audit. So we didn't have one last year, so that's why we weren't here last year, but we were here two years ago. It consists of four different grants, plus we have a salary adjustment the state started last fiscal year, which we got again this fiscal year. So the only finding they had was on our outside auditor, it's a grant W, it's a $50,000 program that we get from the state. And then Florisville ISD contributes 32.5 to that to make up that budget for that grant. Well, the only thing the auditor wants us to do in the future is the money we get that's either from the counties or from a school district to keep it separate from the 50,000. So the only thing in the 50,000, we're just going to charge up to that amount in salaries and so forth on that program. And that was the only thing that was found. And district judges were, you know, we went over this Friday as well. But everything else, the audit went well, they had no other issues on any of other expenses. And we're awarded again this year and we got an application again for this next year. It's a good system, like she's saying, to keep the kids, you know, off the street.
Tom, any idea when we'll get the numbers on the JJAEP funding? What we'll need to do for budgeting on that?
As far as Judge?
Well, what we're going to share with Karnes on the JJ program?
On the county? Okay, so that really does go into the JJ program. The funding that the counties contribute equally go into funding all the benefits outside of the program. So what Judge is referring to is we have a county fund that's shared between us and Wilson and each county contributes to that to pay for operating expenses and so forth and fringe benefits, health insurance, retirement. Because on these expenses for TJJD, she only contributes salary amount, I mean pays salary amounts out of it. The fringe comes out of the shared joint.
For the placements, we either have a judicial placement?
Yeah.
Either the school places them or the bench places the child?
Yes, go ahead and share about what's happening there.
So currently, we, as far as the JJAEP is concerned, there are some questions about how, who funds that placement when it's a court order. So right now, the plan that we have in place is that when a judge orders a student, a child that's been referred to our office, when a judge orders them to the JJAEP, the homeschool district funds that. Well, in talking to the state over the last couple of years, we've realized that we are actually, what they called is a unicorn because that's just not how it works in the state of Texas. Typically, when a court order places a child in the JJAEP, the county is responsible for that placement. So we've been able, we've had the luxury of being able to do it for a long time now. But now we're having discussions because we're having schools that are pulling out because of that reason. So now we're having discussions about possibly the counties incurring those costs, but that's exactly where we are right now.
Let us know, because we're starting to budget now, we need to know what that's going to run the county.
Okay.
And it's a necessity, because otherwise if we don't have that, the child will go to the street.
The child is expelled to the street, that's exactly what happens, yes. Currently, we have four enrolled. Yeah, after COVID, everything just went down, yeah, so.
And the judges, so the county judges have been good about preventative measures to keep these kids, you know.
Yeah, we're a system that should be working progressively and have progressive sanctions. So if we're doing this correctly, and I believe that the judges that we have in place right now, they are absolutely using it as a measure like that. We shouldn't be placing everybody in the JJ right now, we should be using it as a last resort type of method.
Absolutely.
And our judges are doing a very good job at that in both counties.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, I appreciate it. Agenda item number nine, we have the TAC Risk Management Pool, HR Department, presentation of the Texas Association of County Risk Management Pool, Southeast Region Consultant Team to introduce consultants and provide overview of TAC RMP services, resources, training available for Wilson County.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning. I'm Lisa McKeig and I am the Risk Management Consultant for you. And I have the pleasure of working with Ms. Trevino and your HR Director, Jalen, on your coverages. So my role is I handle your liability coverages, which include your auto, general liability, public officials, law enforcement, workers' compensation, and property. Thank you for being a member of the Risk Management Pool. We have, we're delighted that you moved the other coverages to us last October and have a great working relationship with both offices. So I basically work with Brenda's office on renewals. When the renewals come out, I'm looking at your assets, I'm looking at exposures that you have, deductibles, and making any recommendations that we may see there for you. My team behind me are the other consultants, who I always say are boots on the ground. They're the ones that come out and provide all the risk control training to put you in a better risk management state. So I'm going to step aside and let them introduce themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Good morning, Court. How are you?
Good morning.
My name's Darren Jackson, I'm the law enforcement supervisor with TAC. I've got 40 years of law enforcement experience and for the past several years, I've been your designated law enforcement consultant. Known Sheriff Stewart for several years, we've visited in the office about tax services that are available to him and his employees. I've just hired a new law enforcement consultant for the Southeast Region that will be onboarding next Monday. And I'll bring him back around within a few weeks to meet the sheriff and the constables and go over the services that we provide. Most of our services are geared toward law enforcement, operation of the jail, keeping your officers safe, keeping your officers out of liability issues. But we do also offer training for courthouse employees on active shooter threats, courthouse securities, employee safety. So anytime we can provide an overview or a walkthrough of your facilities and make recommendations, we're certainly happy to do so. And like I said, in a few weeks, I'll bring a new consultant by perhaps to court or certainly to meet with your law enforcement leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lisa E. Dase and I'm your HR consultant. I've been with TAC for a little bit over a year. Before that, I managed the traveling team for your retirement system. And then before that, I managed the insurance program for the state of Texas at their retirement system. So I have a lot of background in insurance and benefits. My focus is really on y'all's HR policies, the county's policies, department policies, as well as trainings and how we can help support the county, make sure that we're staying in compliance with a lot of the different regulations that supervisors are liable for and therefore the county is liable for. The great thing about all of our services here is that it comes with your coverage. So me coming out to conduct trainings, Isaac, Darren, bring simulators out, doing any of that, it's all part of your coverage. There's no additional cost and our role here is just to be a resource for the county. At the back of that, you'll also see that there is information about our Risk Management Conference. That's going to be on April 9th through the 11th. There's no cost for that registration as well and you can attend virtually or in person. If you want to head up to Rand Rock and enjoy that conference in person as well. But my services are available anytime. I've come out and I've met with Jalen as well to talk about those different services.
Excuse me, my allergies have me this morning. My name's Isaac Garcia, I'm your Risk Control Consultant. My focus typically, most times, is going to be with your Road and Bridge offices, but we offer services that can help anybody out in the county. And like Lisa said, our services are included as part of your coverage. So now that you've brought us on for your workers' comp and your other lines of coverage, we can provide a wide variety of services to help mitigate the risk that you all deal with here in the county. So if there's anything we can do to help you out, please let us know, we're always available. On our business cards, you'll find most of us have our mobile phone numbers on there. We are always available with a quick phone call or a text. Or if it's nothing too pressing, just send us an email and we'll do what we can to help you all out.
I just want to add, in addition to our County Management Risk Conference that we have coming up in April, if you are unable to attend in person, there is virtual sessions going on. There's no cost for our members for the virtual. And also in May, we will be having our County Technology Conference. So that conference is really picking up and growing with all the concerns around cybersecurity, ransomware, breaches. So just wanted you to be aware of that. And I am not sure, do y'all know if that one's virtual, for that one, for County Technology?
Georgetown takes.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I would think it's probably being offered as virtual also. But just wanted you to be aware of those two conferences coming up. Again, thank you for being a member of our Risk Management Pool. We enjoy working with you all and we're all here to serve you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes, sir, we can provide, if you look in there, there's a list of optional training. There, we can provide any one of those training services in there. What I will do at some point in time, I've met with Brenda one time virtually. And what we can do is at some point in time, meet again to kind of talk about y'all's losses, see where your problem areas may be, see where your gaps in policy may be, and then provide services accordingly to mitigate those issues, training being one of our biggest things. Yeah, one of the trainings that I like to provide y'all is what we call Safety Square. So statewide, some of the issues that we have, back injuries, driving incidents, lack of personal protective equipment, and slips, trips, and falls, and those four areas, that's where we're going to see a good 90% of our worker injuries. So we like to provide training, that takes about two hours, that's something that we can set up for one precinct, that's something that we could set up for all the precincts. So it's dependent on y'all. Like I said, we can definitely set that up, feel free to contact me or I can give you a call and see when we can set that up. Right now, I'm booked out till about late May, so it probably wouldn't be till June or July that I'm able to get back out here and provide that training, but we can definitely provide that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Agenda item number 10, we have Commissioner King, Precinct 2, discuss only, Precinct 2 to purchase 4,000 gallon water truck from Rush Peterbilt. Commissioner, you have a floor?
So, the package in there already, we've put in, I'm putting in for a 4,000 gallon water truck here, but it'd be a 10 speed. This is discussion only, I, Brenda, can you let the court know we're actually pulling these funds off?
Yes, so the, each of the commissioners was budgeted for additional funds for road and bridge repairs for this fiscal year. Commissioner King does have that money budgeted in that line item and he requested to utilize some of those funds to purchase this water truck. We have allowed and did allow last fiscal year as well. For the commissioners, if you feel that it's in the best interest of the county to utilize those budgeted funds for equipment for road and bridge repairs, and it's certainly appropriate to do so. The proposal that we received, you will see that there is a byboard contract number on there. So there was no need to go out for bid for this truck. That is the best possible price that the county can receive. Commissioner King does have the available funds in the budget to do so.
You don't have a water truck, do you?
No, I just have a tanker.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner? Move to agenda item number 11, Thriving Hearts Crisis Center, discuss and take action on a request to read proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Good morning, Judge Whitman.
Will you be doing the reading of the proclamation?
I am, if that's okay with y'all. Good morning, Judge Whitman and Commissioners. Thank you all for having Thriving Hearts Crisis Center here to present to y'all about our Sexual Assault Awareness Month coming up in April. Judge, if you don't mind, I'll read the top part and then if you can just read the bottom part about doing the proclamation part.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas, every 68 seconds, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted. And in Texas, two in five women and one in five men are victims of sexual assault. And in the fiscal year 2024, Thriving Hearts Crisis Center rendered 850 services to 379 survivors of sexual violence. And we provided 94 hospital accompaniments for sexual assault exams. Whereas, according to a study conducted by the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas at Austin Institute on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, approximately 6.3 million Texans have been sexually victimized. Whereas, most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know. And 91% of victims do not report to police. Whereas, it is appropriate to salute the more than 20 million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and the efforts of victims, volunteers, and professionals who combat sexual assault. Whereas, national and community organizations and private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their hard work in promoting awareness about sexual assault. Whereas, police, forensic workers, and prosecutors should be recognized and commended for their hard work and innovative strategies to increase the percentage of sexual assault cases that resolve into prosecution and incarceration of the offenders. Whereas, sexual violence is a persistent and pervasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year-round. And in order for healthy communities, all citizens should support the effort to end sexual violence every month of the year. And whereas, national and community organizations, businesses in the private sector, and the media are urged through the National Sexual Assault Awareness of Sexual Assault Violence and Strategies to decrease the incidence of sexual assault.
Now, therefore, we, the undersigned, do hereby proclaim the month of April as the National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in Wilson County and ask all citizens to observe this month by supporting the goals and ideals of victims and those working toward awareness and prevention and by participating in community efforts. In witness where we have here on to set our hand, the 24th day of March 2025. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to accept this proclamation to record. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussion regarding this agenda item? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, Court. I will be sending out emails to you guys to let you know teal is the color, closest I could get today, but teal is the color that symbolizes for sexual assault. And Denim Day is April 30th. We do encourage all of the community to get involved, take photo ops and send it in to ourselves so we can post it on our social media, just to do awareness about sexual assault. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Bonnie, appreciate it. Thank you for all your work, too.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go ahead and take a photograph. Agenda item number 12, we have Mr. Raymond Herrera from the Veteran Service Officer, Second Quarter Strategic Planning Review informational with two testimonials.
Judge, just a, good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. A little change to that, we're going to have three testimonials today. We had a conflict of scheduling and we have our veteran here though today. So we'll just add him last minute. So we are here for our Second Quarter 2024-2025 Strategic Planning Review. Next slide, please. Our mission, for people that are here, new in attendance and watching online, bridging the gap between military service members, veterans, and dependent benefits to maximize entitlements. And we do that through VA compensation, pension, appeals, survivors' benefits, education, burial benefits, state and local entitlements. FY 2023-2024, this is what I still have left. Things that were filed last fiscal year are still going to be rolling into this fiscal year. So we have 105 still pending. Next slide, please. Constituents assisted by precinct, this is for this, this fiscal year, 2024-2025, this is year-to-date. So right now, we have 312. The trend is the same, we have Precinct 2 being the highest, Precinct 3 not far behind, and Precinct 1 and 4 are kind of almost the same and has been consistently the same since. Next slide, please. Number of forms, 480. Claims, 1,392. Again, this is year-to-date for these conditions, or not conditions, these forms and claims. Next slide, please. We are honored today to have retired Air Force Major Carmen MacIntosh. He's a 92-year-old Korean and Vietnam veteran pilot. I mean, we don't have many of these veterans living and it's just an honor that he can be here on his own will and two legs without assistance. So after multiple attempts appealing Mr. MacIntosh's claims and utilizing TDIU program, which is a program where, and this is what I want to highlight for the public, there are veterans who are not able to receive 100% based off of the service-connected conditions. But because of the severity of the conditions they do have and their age, they will bridge that gap and deem them 100%, so they can rake in entitlements at like healthcare, education, and compensation. So if, without further ado- So, if, without further ado, if I can have Mr. MacIntosh come in, come up and say a few words.
Good morning, Judge, gentlemen, and ladies. I'm, as he said, a 92-year-old veteran. I was a little farm boy, like a lot of people were, back in the 40s and 50s, and I joined the Air Force immediately after high school, and was treated very well by the military. Because of events that happened shortly after I enlisted, the Vietnam, or the Korean War started, and they needed air crews. I was fortunate enough to be selected for training in an air crew, and ended up in B-29s in Korea as a bombardier. After the Korean War finished, the Air Force needed pilots, so they, I ended up in pilot training, and spent the next 16 years either training other pilots or flying F-4s when it came time for Vietnam, after the Cuban crisis in Florida in 19, or in 1964 and 65. I've been fortunate enough to be associated with Ray after he, I found out he was here. He's helped me a lot with various questions I had with getting through the VA system, and I've been very fortunate with him, and he does listen to what we have to say. He goes forward and seems to know more than most of the VA representatives I've encountered in the past, and so I'm very honored to be a constituent of Mr. Herrer. I thank you very much for your time, and have a great day.
Major, Major, we thank you. Appreciating it. Ray, when all, when you're through with the presentation, we'd like to get, the court, do I get a picture with, with all the recipients?
Most definitely, Judge, yes. Next slide, please. Number, number of constituents by contacts, so to the left is gonna be veterans who actually came through my office that I spoke to and it resulted in an action, and it could be of all the things that we assist. To the right, that's just gonna be any interaction, maybe not have resulted in action, but maybe we provided services, scheduled appointments, and just communicated with somebody in the public. So, 239, oh, go back, I'm sorry, 239 have resulted in action, and then you can see by appointments, mainly email, phone, and walk-ins. So we do take walk-ins, but we just are, you know, jam-packed with scheduled appointments already. Interactions, 288, emails, 103, in-person, 144, zero faxes, unspecified, this is a new category. In the past, it was because I unselect or did not select, make a selection from email, in-person, or in-phone. But what I did, I changed it. Anytime I have to tap into a veteran's file with them not being there, whether it be running reports or adding information to their file, that is where that 53 comes from, still providing a service, with a total of 588. New and returning open and closed cases, this is again for this fiscal year, we have 311 total, and open cases, we have 241, closed out 72. Next slide, please. Next, we have a retired Air Force Master Sergeant Harry Smith. Veteran Smith attended one of our disability briefings at Frank DeHeda Veterans Home. So this is one key event that we have, where we talk about different types of services, and we plan to still have those. So he's a, it's a good example of the process that we've implemented, and we saw him from the beginning to the end, and we're still continuing to offer some type of service. So veteran went through our Wilson County VA compensation process for the first time 32 years after service. Veteran was granted compensation, healthcare, and education. If I can have Mr. Smith, please come up.
Sure. I'm sure I don't get nervous here. What I got here is I got "Shut Up and Suck It Up" a VA testimonial. "Good morning, everyone. My name is Harry J. Smith, and for over 20 years, I've been an aircraft maintainer, and I probably worked on your Air Force, and have done numerous things in the world's largest unscheduled airlines, commonly known as the United States Air Force. During that time, I was a jack-of-all-trades, a master of many, working worldwide locations and in all extreme weather conditions from desert-hot, winter-cold, and typhoon-wet. Having grown up amongst veterans of the First, Second Korean, and Vietnam Wars, I was taught how to deal with pain. Shut up and suck it up. That was exactly what my comrades and I did in our military careers. Having served all over the globe, receiving test treatments in military hospitals, and working on medical evacuation aircraft, I've seen our wounded warriors and heroic dead returning to the United States. In contrast, any physical injuries and chemical exposures I received during my aircraft maintenance career were miniscule, nothing to complain about. Shut up and suck it up. After the first Gulf War, during a turmoil of our overseas base shutting down, I realized it was time to retire. Unfortunately, with all personnel struggling with the goal of packing up, shipping out, and getting out of Dodge as rapidly as possible, all base services were severely limited amid this chaos, and without receiving a separation physical, I was handed my incomplete service records and told to have a nice day. I had not received any battlefield injuries, so I didn't complain. Shut up and suck it up. I lived my retarded life as a civilian contractor, a Mr. Mom, and continued to shut up and suck it up. Since my years of flight-lined exposure to screaming jet aircraft engines, and deafening wail of operating systems, and constantly being marinated in various toxic aircraft fluids, my enduring personal injuries received during my maintenance career, my wife Michelle, a member of the local Women's Warrior Group, urged me to go and learn about the veterans' disabilities and services. In April 2024, at the Florville Veterans Home, the Wilson County Veteran Service Office presented a briefing on the PACD Act, a long-standing VA healthcare and benefits for those exposed to toxic substances. Since I knew somebody passed away from cancer, and we were both drenched in the same stuff, I decided to go. Upon attending and chatting with fellow military retirees and a lengthy discussion with the, after the briefing with our VA representative, Mr. Ray Herrera, I returned home to consider what I had experienced. That April briefing changed my life. After days of contemplation and discussing with my wife, she convinced me to schedule an appointment to discuss my individual military experiences, what benefits and entitlements offered by the Veterans Administration I might qualify for. I met with VA Representative Ray Herrera. Under his direction, I followed the VA claim, completing, completed a medical review, and now I am receiving disability benefits and entitlements I'd never considered available to me. In conclusion, what have I learned? This is not a handout. There's no shame involved for any military member, veteran, or dependent for requesting receiving any qualifying VA benefit and entitlement. We've earned it. I want to personally thank VA Representative Ray Herrera of the Wilson County Services Office and his staff for enlightening myself and surely many others that there was no reason to shut up and suck it up. Please remember and inform others that the Wilson County Veteran Service Office, under the leadership of VA Representative Ray Herrera, is an essential asset to all active retired military members and their dependents. They are there to help. Ray, thank you again for providing the opportunity for me to discuss my military experience. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. and Mrs. Martin. I came across Mr. Martin first through a scheduled appointment. Can you hear me okay? And the first thing he advised me is that he was referred to our office from the VA. So, he had been going to the VA for services, and they referred him to our office. And I was a little puzzled at first, because I figured, you know, the best service you can get is gonna be at the VA in regards to representation and somebody to advocate on your behalf. But what I found, talking with Mr. Martin, is he has been ignored, and the things he has presented to the VA have taken longer than normal, and he came to our office hoping that we can maybe change something. Throughout that first appointment, we realized that his spouse, Mrs. Martin, was also entitled to a form of compensation from her previous marriage, where the veteran was also, or her spouse was also a veteran. So, that first appointment, we weren't able to assist Mr. Martin initially, but we did assist Mrs. Martin, and that ended up in a good outcome in itself. Later, we were able to advocate for Mr. Martin after, he already had multiple congressional requests, and, and through our services, though, advocating and communicating through, with the VA, we were able to get him answers and get some of the programs that he had applied for more than three years going to start the process. I don't know where, but it's just a matter of just talking on the phone. I think we're on the phone more than an hour and a half at, at multiple times. So, without further ado, I just want to have Mr. and Mrs. Martin come up and share their experiences.
Judge, Commissioners, rest of the court, rest of the audience, I started my service for the United States in 1965. I was gonna go play football on a scholarship and got a direct appointment to West Point. Decided that was, if I was gonna go in, all I really ever wanted to do was jump out of airplanes, live in a swamp, and kill the enemy. And I got to be pretty damn good at it. But I've also had some problems with the VA. I went from 1966 to 2017 without a penny, even though I had been paralyzed from the neck down twice, the back down three times. I've got nearly 5,000 pages of medical records with the VA, and my public doctors have worked on me also. I broke my neck three times, my back four, I've been shot six, I've got seven heart stents, artificial knees on both of them, artificial hip, 34 operations, 65-foot fall on my head with 101st Airborne Ricondo School. And when I was about 64, 65, I did a 100-foot fall off the side of a mountain over in Uganda during a security mission for the Department of State and Ugandan government, because we had people by the name of Charles Taylor and Coney, or sending people down to kidnap some people that I had, seven of the world's top photojournalists had asked me to supply security for. Fell 100-foot off the side of a mountain, put a tree limb through my stomach, shattered both my hands, both my feet, crawled back up, broke the tree limb off, ran down the 44 concussions on top of all of that. The VA is inept in most things. You've got some good people there. We found out, last time I was in with Ray, it's quite interesting. We found out that, yeah, they got all my paperwork when I got hit the last time, and my spine shattered, and I had to have two emergency operations, and told that I had to have 24-hour care, because I keep falling over and breaking bones and stuff, because I have vertigo from so many head injuries. They said, "Oh, we don't have any paperwork for you. You don't have any claims here." Well, we found out why. If it hadn't been for Ray, we'd never find out why. Because these idiots up in Janesville, Wisconsin, were sending my paperwork back and forth to Billy Martin in Kansas City, Kansas. Now, I hadn't been to Kansas City in over 50 years, and how they got some address up there to do it, but we finally got that straightened out a little bit, and that means a lot to us, because I can't mow my yard like I used to, I can't go out and work like I used to, and to have the VA help me with 24-hour care means I can hire somebody to come in and help us out, especially help my wife out, because she's gone through hell. I've been exposed to orange. One of my teams, the Anzac Boys from over in Australia and New Zealand, I had 108 of them I trained, lost 104 of them to orange. Her husband, my best buddy. One afternoon, I spent 28 days, one afternoon I spent 28 days, with 100 ChiCom North Vietnamese regulars and Vietcong chasing me, and I was by myself trying to get back to save terr- territory. Kinda screws with your brain a little bit. You just want people to go out there and just, when you put your life on the line, and I'd do it all over again, because this is a constitutional republic, and that means that there's some of us out there like these gentlemen that you've talked to and heard today, we're willing to put our ass on the line. Commissioner King's put his ass on the line. I know all about that. So's the judge. I patented the Marine Corps rifle stock for their snipers. McMillan built it for them, but I patented it and decided I've trained more world champion military snipers than anyone extent, and I pulled the trigger more times than I ever wanted to do it, and I have to live with all that. I'm also a chaplain, I've got several graduate degrees and a doctorate. I have 113 and 197. Carlos Hathcock, Whitefeather, the Great Marine was a dear, dear friend of mine. And this time, I'm sorry. Get my wife in here. She's got a good story, too.
My husband passed away in 2017, H.O.B., and I had tried for a couple of years after he passed away to make sure all the paperwork that I needed in was there, but I never could get a straight answer. I had called Waco, and they told me it takes up to five years before we even review it sometimes. Well, luckily, Ray had acknowledged this, like, we need to do something about this. And so he found out that something wasn't filed correctly, and it was supposed to have been done within the first year. And I'm going, "Well, if they're not reviewing my paperwork for five years," and I never got an answer from anybody. You know, I, I don't know where that paperwork went, but he helped me out, and I am now getting benefits as a survivor, and I really appreciate the hard work he did.
You've got a good man here.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure.
I just want to highlight real quick before I really go into detail about these numbers. What I really try to capture are raw numbers, what our office does, although our office is accredited through multiple state and national agencies, and I like to say, you know, I can throw all this fluff out there, but I think the most important thing is to give you the, the bread and butter of what we actually do within Wilson County. So, as of fiscal year, year-to-date, we have 1,634,283.56. That's what Wilson County has secured on, on behalf of the veterans that live and reside within Wilson County. And that can be many things, survivors' benefits, pension, VA disability, so on and so forth. So, currently, we've exceeded our department budget by 1,350%. Our goal for this fiscal year was 1.5. We've already completed and exceeded that by 108%. Next slide, please. Goals, invest in existing and potential partnerships and veteran-related organizations that align with our current dynamic, and I think that's a key with our current dynamics. I have two partners here today that are here just to support and to, I want them to know what Wilson County is doing, and how, better understand how we can actually partner up in the future. Implement ongoing training and procedures to better case manage. Again, that's the systems that we use, we're always looking for innovation. Branding and marketing, we're still doing that, we're still trying to be out in the public, but with a jam-packed schedule and limited time, you know, we do it as much as we can. But we do use social media, I didn't put no social media numbers, but I think for the next one, I will go and present that, and how we have grown within our following and the people that we reach through social media, but that's a part of our marketing. Incorporate VA work-study personnel. I just got back word that- I just got back word that we got approved for a work-study already, so I'm just waiting for them, those people to, you know, reach back out to me so we can move forward with actually implementing free, it's free to the county, right? It's paid by the VA, it's a VA program. This is something I started with, work-study program where you can get some on-the-job training while still going to school. Challenges: Canceled and rescheduled appointments, 47. This is the most we've ever had. Although the number's high, every time we get a canceled, we're filling that slot in. So we have now personnel to reach out before the appointment, and if they're not going to make it, they cancel, and right away, we already fill somebody in from, that's a month away because we're scheduled about a month away, get somebody from the back, and filling in those slots as they're canceling. Confidentiality spaces and personnel dynamics, it's going good. We have a nice setup. I don't know if you've been there, but we have a slight little lobby. We have two offices, so we are growing and we appreciate the support. Training certifications for new employee, Mrs. Natalie Howarth, which is in attendance today. We have a transition with an employment employee in our department and, you know, just getting her up to par, although she comes very highly qualified in supporting our office. Vision: Self-sustaining streamlined Veterans Department. Everything we do and how we do it is aligned to follow that. Adequate department services, our adequate department to service our growing veteran population. As you guys know, Wilson County is growing, and with that, so is the veteran population. Department ability to offer more timely and accessible resources. Again, everything we do, our goals and our processes and procedures is to fulfill that process. I just want to say thank you for your time, gentlemen, and have a good rest of your day. Yes, will do. Yes, and we can have a picture with all our veterans are here in attendance. It's up, yeah, we want the hat.
We want the hat.
We want the hat.
We now move to agenda item number 13. We have Commissioner Martin, precinct one, discuss take action on approving the use of interest earned in the Texas Class Emergency Operations Center account in the amount of $200,000 to be added as a contingency line item in the EOC budget, building budget for the purchase of equipment, furniture, and unexpected expenses. Commissioner, you have the floor.
Not me. I'm just...
Okay, you approve the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Judge. I got with our county treasurer as of March the 18th to ask how much, if you remember, we, the $5 million that we received from the state appropriated funds for the use of the building of the new Emergency Operations Center was put into the Texas class investment or a sub-account for, through Texas class so that it could accrue interest. I asked our treasurer what that interest amount was year-to-date. So far, the amount of interest earned as of 3/18 was $354,829.92. When we budgeted for the Emergency Operations Center, I was not anticipating that it would be moving along as quickly as it is, so we did not budget, and we didn't know at the time either, the amount of expenses associated with furnishing the building. And I provided you what our Emergency Management Coordinator estimates to be needed. What we did find out, though, through the general contractor, which has brought us, is that some of these items, such as the televisions and a couple of other things, are things needed to be ordered so that they can install them during the course of the building. I believe we're looking at somewhere around July, August to be completed with the building for anticipated move-in date in August. And so I wanted to bring this to your attention and request the use of up to $200,000 of that interest for the ordering of what Ms. Stafford needs to place an order now. And then any additional expenses, it appears that we do have some unexpected expenses that have been coming up that are not part of the general contractor's contract, and so we just want to make sure that we have everything covered and not have any delays in the completion of the project.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number 13.
I'll go to make a motion to use the interest earned from Texas Class Emergency Operations, or for the Emergency Operations Center in the amount of $2,000.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Paradola. Is there any other discussion?
Ms. Stafford, do you have anything else that you were seeing that we may need?
Not at this time, but it's only as long as it comes up with it, the stuff that's not in the contract or saying like the Phelps electric bill. So there's nothing as of today.
Some of the things, I believe, one of the things that she pointed out to me last week is the Guardian, Guardian, right? That's who's doing it, security system. So we will have ongoing expenses, like monthly expenses for that. We just don't know how much that's going to cost yet, nor the cost of the installation. So those were, those are the types of things that we're not certain what it's going to cost and why I'm asking up to $200,000. If it doesn't get spent by the end of this fiscal year, then we won't touch the interest, we won't touch that money, and then we'll be able to better budget for the new fiscal year for increased expenses for the emergency operation, or actually would fall under Emergency Management Department's budget, so.
Is whole bill due under Emergency Management?
It is. Well, that's my understanding unless we deem a whole another department, but at this time, I would imagine that it would be budgeted under Emergency Management.
Actually, that we would, is there a portion going in there with dispatch?
Dispatch. We would, it's going to be some, definitely, some pencil-moving stuff around, so we'll have to brainstorm on, come June, July, on what we want that to look like.
Because when you just, Cindy, is part of this stuff, the actual consoles and stuff that were dispatched, has that been figured into that?
No, sir.
Because that was, like I said, I wasn't anticipating this quick. I was figuring with the budget for next year.
Right.
The spot, that equipment. I haven't got a total price on it yet. I do know that ACO is going to pay for three-quarters of it, 75%, but I don't know what I'm 25%.
That's for the new console for the dispatching that's going to be in the new Emergency Operations Center?
And that's consoles, file cabinets, all works.
Yeah. So I just advise Sheriff, and just kind of like I mentioned to Cindy also, as you're starting to get these things, just let me know, and we'll keep a list of either things that need to be ordered now, or if it's anything that we can or want to wait until 10-1, we can certainly do that as well. I just don't want to delay anything for operational use once it gets moved in, and that's what I mentioned to Cindy last week, is if you are, if...
The consoles have...
Yeah, exactly. Because we don't want, we don't want to not be able to move in in August and then not be able to utilize it for what it's designed for. Yeah.
Budget for that since we're in that season.
Correct.
Any other discussion, Commissioner? Here or none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. All those against, motion passes. Agenda item number 14, Ms. Lucerato permitting and development director, 14A subdivision, Heritage Oaks, A1, discuss and take action on release of construction letter of credit.
Good morning. Yes, Heritage Woods had put down a letter of credit for $880,100, and they will be replacing that with a maintenance bond of the same amount. This is set to expire April 8th of 2026 when they're done with their maintenance period of two years, because it goes two years after the plat was filed. So we're asking for the construction letter of credit to be released and then acceptance for the maintenance credit, letter of credit.
You want those all in one motion, or they're listed as two different agenda items? I think so. Okay. Well, we'll start with 14A1, discuss take action on the release of the construction letter of credit. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to release the construction letter of credit on the Heritage Woods subdivision.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Paradola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Do we have any other discussion on 14A1? Here or none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, the motion passes. 14A2, discuss take action on acceptance of maintenance letter of credit, $880,100 to be released April 8th, 2026.
And I'll make the motion to accept maintenance letter of credit for $880,100. That will be released on April 8th of 2026. Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Paradola and seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Do we have any other discussion on 14A2? Here or none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those against, motion passes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 15, we have our county sheriff, Jim Stewart, monthly progress report.
Good morning. Okay, the month of February, total number of reportable calls, 455. Non-reportable calls, 1,165. Total calls from year-to-date, 2497. Well, correction, 3449. Lot stop calls for the month of February, 49. Animal complaint calls, 41. Animal health calls, 17. Burn man calls, 8. Total warnings issued by Sheriff's Office, 366. Missed warning, 1. One burn bag warning. One animal complaint warning. Zero, nothing. February, traffic citations, 43. Missed warning citations, 15. Burn man citations, 5. Animal complaint citations, 2. Lot stops, citations, 2. One call arrest, about patrol, 10 in February. One side arrest, about patrol, 16 in February. Security checks, 160 in February. Patrol buys, 756. Global traffic enforcement for the month of February, 382. CID, closed cases, month of February, 10. Total new cases for the month of February, 17. Cases sent to probation, given out probation, 1 in February. Nine cases sent to county attorney's office. Twenty-one cases to the district attorney's office. And 22 cases in the month of February was basically put inside pending investigation or more evidence. Criminal convictions, past for the month of February. Felony arrests by CI, ORF, fast force staff. Five felony arrests, seven missing arrest. 103 traffic stops and assisted patrol, time calls. Weapons seized, 2. Stolen vehicles recovered, 2. No vehicles seized, they had four days, they worked other county operations on the operational staff. We just completed one in county op this week, this last week, and they had six undocumented agents sat on, under the border. For the month of February, 100 kilograms of meth, all that was seized by them. New for this month, some stats from the jail. Inmates house, it sounds very big, 3,064, but according to the way the jail commission requires us to report, if it's 190 days, 109 average for 30 days, that's how many people you handle for a month. I don't understand exactly what that stat is supposed to represent, but that totals everybody that we had in the jail for the month of February. We are right now averaging 109. Per day, averaging about three inmates a day, basically, 75 new inmates for the month of February. Of that, we're housing 11 federal inmates from Marshal Service, who's collected $26,820. We're housing seven for Gonzalez County Sheriff's Office and have received $8,940 in payment for housing those for Gonzalez County.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Hang on, I've got a question for you. So are we breaking even on the total prisoners? I guess that's the bottom line, I would say.
I'm telling you, I'm actually looking at that right now because the seven prisoners from Gonzalez County was right at $9,000 for a month. I've got other counties that we have the space that would want to house. On those, all it requires is us to think about a total number of days and send them a bill. The feds will not start figuring time for processing because their forms are very complicated. They get sent back to us quite often with little minor details. They, we have transports, these other prisoners, we don't move them. They come get them, they need to go to the doctor, they go back to court. All we do is house them. I'm not real sure we could benefit more by housing sheriff's office, oh, Sheriff's Office. But I do know that we just had ICE come on, which ICE is basically is the sheriff's offices. They are three-day maximum, and we don't have to move them. They come, they bring them up, they come pick them up. So if they start doing that, actually, ICE prisoners would be more beneficial than the marshal.
Then I just, I signed that updated contract with the Marshal's Office, right, so that we could accept female, but we've already been doing that, correct?
Well, they said, except males.
Just males, okay.
We were doing only females. Now we're saying both.
Did I send that contract? Did you have one? Okay. It was basic, and all they're doing is modifying it. It had Judge Jackson's name on it, same thing.
Yeah, it was a modification to a current contract. There was no change other than who we were housing.
Okay.
We didn't change dollar amounts or anything.
Okay.
It was all the same.
And you know, the government's always going to be a little slow getting you paid back.
They're slow and they're very intense when it comes to the paperwork side, the process. And that's what... They come get them, they need to go to the doctor, they go back to court. All we do is house them. I'm not real sure we could benefit more by housing sheriff's office, oh, sheriff's office, oh, that would be, but I do know that we just had ICE come on, which ICE is basically is the sheriff's office. They are three-day maximum and we don't have to move them. They come, they bring them up, they come pick them up. So if they start moving them, actually ICE prisoners would be more beneficial than the marshal.
Then I just, I signed that updated contract with the marshal's office, right, so that we could accept female. But we've already been doing that, correct?
We've accepted males. We had started.
Just males, okay.
We were doing only females. Now we're accepting both.
Did I send that contract? Do you have one? Okay. It was basic, when all they're doing is modifying it. It had Judge Jackson's name on it, same thing.
Yeah, it was a modification to a current contract.
Right.
There was no change other than who we were housing.
Okay.
We didn't change dollar amounts or anything.
Okay.
It was all the same.
And you know, the government's always going to be a little slow getting you paid back.
They're, they're slow and they're very intense when it comes to paperwork side of the process.
Yeah.
And that, that's what causes this time effort, is, is all the paperwork involved.
Right.
Are you, are you moving it back and forth just another day, two, to go to court in San Antonio?
It kind of depends. They, they get on a roll, we can be moving back and forth and sometimes multiple kinds of day to the federal courthouse. But most of the time, it's just one day a week, maybe two.
Evelyn? Okay, I will. I'll get it to you.
Are we compensated for that?
We are compensated for it, yes. Yes, I, I was, the whole works.
And we now have a very nice transport van, correct?
Yes, we do. You haven't seen it, you haven't yet.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was a Marriott Hogtail van.
So it's, it's on days that, that we have, say, district court and county court, and then they have transport, ensures our, ensures our officers that are in the court security side.
Yes, it does.
Those are the same ones that are doing the transport right now.
Yes, sir.
So that, that's where it creates problems sometimes, it's a short staff that they want us to move somebody to San Antonio one day when we've got four buildings, four
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner, for the sheriff? All right, we moved to agenda item number sixteen. Ms., Ms. Barnett's not here, but she did provide a report. I'll give you all a few minutes to look that over and then Okay, agenda item number seventeen, we have Ms. Christina Moots, county treasurer. Can't hear me? Agenda item number seventeen, we have Ms. Christina Moots, county treasurer, discuss and take action on county treasurer financial report.
Good morning. Included in your binders today is my monthly report for February 2025. As always, the layout is the same. So once you see our checking accounts, obviously with the beginning, ending balance, any debits and credits that we did have with those accounts, our CDs, list on the bottom with the interest that was earned. Obviously, there's no debits being taken out of those CDs. Then followed by our investments that we have with Texpool, Texas Class, as well as Financial Northeastern Company. Listed the interest rate for that month of February with beginning, ending balances, interest deposit, as well as any withdrawals or contributions into those funds. Then followed by our obligations, our any lease purchases that we are paying for. And then, as always, the last pages, normally two pages, is what's labeled my treasurer's monthly report out of RFI system, listing all the fund balances with, within that month. Again, any debits or credits within those funds. Gives you an overlook for the month
Ms. Ms., I have one question. So if the bottom of the investments on your page?
Yes, sir.
You don't have much in that. One is the Financial Northeastern. What is that? Do you know if it's someplace else?
We definitely can. What the status was for that is, we did have roughly around 271 that was locked into a CD. It matured, and so what it does, it gets moved to a money market savings kind of account. We did then use those funds, transferred out. So yes, right now, as you see, there is just over, a little over 54. That can be transferred out. I have not added any more into it just because of the interest rates for locking something into a broker's CD. I can do better. We can do better with Texas Class or even Texpool at this moment. So yes, it can definitely, I can bring that to you all if you'd like, next court, and just remove that out because it's not obviously earning much with that little bit.
It was an account that was created back in 2020, I believe, or before 2020.
Yes.
I think a million or?
It was a million broke into four ways. Those matured right before my time. One stayed and we went ahead.
It's not much, but it's just a fund to maintain. It's just another one to keep track of. It's not making as much as it was putting in the other.
Exactly. When we did have those, the little over 270 in there, it was earning. Once it was locked in, we were able to utilize those, so it was beneficial at the time for us. But yes, I can definitely sit down and see, come to court next month or next, for the month, what are we already in? We'll be in April soon. We're already at the end of March. But yes, I can do that. And then what the court, if they want to utilize it or it just gets put into our operating account. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Mr. Mr. Moreton?
I wouldn't pay a motion on agenda item seventeen, take action on, ten, third and five.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's financial report for second word, twenty-five.
Sure.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion on agenda item number eighteen? Here or none, all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Thank you all.
Agenda item number eighteen, Ms. Jalen Boxer, community resource specialist, presentation of payroll personnel change.
I don't have anything today, Judge.
So noted in our number report for number eighteen. Agenda item number nineteen, we move to run at the Reno County Auditorium to start to take action on county bills. Try again. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion on agenda item number nineteen? Here or none, all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, adjourn, and it is ten-four to be adjourned.